It's my pleasure to call the State Board of Education meeting to order. I think everyone's here. Thank you and good morning. And I'd like to welcome our guests and those who will be viewing us meeting through live media streaming at the KSDE website. If you would please, I will read the mission. Mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. If you would please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we begin, I'd like to add some, see if we couldn't, before we approve the agenda, add a few items. First of all, item 16. There'll be an addition to today's agenda. There will be 10 minutes for a executive session at the end of the day, 16, uh, 17, excuse me. No, 16. I got the numbers right. For personnel matters that we will need to have. And then also add item 17 to act, to issue a notice of intent to non-renew contract at a Kansas State School for the Blind Teacher. So we have an item 16 and 17 to add. Also, I would like to amend the agenda. Item 10, Coalition of Innovative Districts Recommendation for Licensor. From an action item to discussion only. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Porter?
This could be a perceived conflict of interest. My school is listed there, so I would like to be able to do that separately so I can recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, we're pulling item D for a separate vote, so for Mr. Porter. And what item was that again, please? D on the consent agenda. Thank you. Recommended? Thank you. Do we have second? Kathy Bush seconds it. Having any discussion? If not, seeing none, let's vote. Those in favor of the agenda as amended, please raise your right hand. Let's do that again. I did too quick on the hands. Okay, I see nine hands. Those opposed? Mr. Roberts is opposed. A nine-one vote to approve the agenda. Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting for the March meeting? If not, may I have a motion to approve those? Moved by Jim Porter. Second by Dean Horst. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. I see a 10-0 vote. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the Commissioner's Report. Brad, you're on.
Good morning, everybody. I have several things that I want to update you on, so I am going to start passing out. Okay, I could've came up with a better word, phrase than that. Distribute some materials to you here. The first set of materials, or the first topic is wanted to update you on where we're at with the community conversation tours. The first piece of paper that you're getting is these were the locations, or one of them is the locations where we attended. The number of participants at each one of them. And then down along the bottom, how many of those total we had, well over 1,700 participants during this first phase of tours. And it's broken out across the bottom, how many of them designated that they were a student, a parent, an educator. And then it's broken out in some other areas. But we were really pleased with the attendance at the first round of tours. Right now, we are working with some researchers at Kansas State University that is helping us take all of that information and really analyze it to make sure we do our due diligence in ensuring that we really get the voice of the participants. They have a software program that they're letting us use that takes that qualitative, open-ended type of data that we collected. I think we had 288 tables and of groups throughout all of these. And we were very conscientious that we wanted to make sure at each table there were students, parents, people from different districts. But we have a lot of rich information that was shared. Some of our research staff, working with K-State staff, is really going through and analyzing what is it that the people said that we really want in a successful 24-year-old Kansan? What is our role in that as pre-K through 12? What is higher ed's role? And how can we better streamline that whole pre-K through 16? So we're in the middle of really analyzing that data right now. In the meantime, you also have, I distributed, we are now looking at the attendance. We wanted to have more business industry participation. So what I provided with you here, we are now scheduling some chamber meetings across the state. Our first one will be in a couple weeks, April 27th with the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. Followed May 5th, the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce. We have confirmed a date with Dodge City and Great Bend. They're going to look at combining those two. We are in a conversation with Wichita, Goodland, Lawrence. You know, we can't hit all of them, but we want to make sure across the state we get the input and voice from business and industry. We'll keep updating this list. Our goal and our hope is if one of these are in your area, or you would want to attend as a board, we do a similar format that we did with the other ones, that we have a board member help lead that conversation. So Jim, April 27th, if that works for you. Randy's not going to be able to attend all of these. Obviously, he burned up a lot of his time with the other ones. And so Jay Scott, who's our Assistant Director for Career and Tech Ed, he will be joining me. Randy is going to hit, I know he'll be at the Manhattan one. He won't be able to make, because of other commitments, the Pittsburgh one. But we're adjusting the questions with the chambers a little differently. We'll start with the successful 24-year-old question. But then the second question that we want input from them is, now that we know what skills you want, what skills specifically are you seeing in your employees when you hire them? And what skills are lacking? And then the third question will be, how can business and industry partner with K-12 and higher ed to try and produce those 24-year-olds that we're looking for? So we will keep you updated on the business industry tours as they get scheduled. You may recall several years ago, Kansas was the first state to join the Military Interstate Compact Commission. And we helped with 11 other states that joined that first year, set the bylaws in organizing, you know, how military students transition from one state to another, how we can make that more seamless. So we have a good, in Kansas, relationship with Fort Riley, Fort Leavenworth, and McConnell. Those were the three largest ones. So we're reaching out to them to have this same kind of conversation with military. What do they see are the important skills and attributes? And how can they partner? So we're working on scheduling with those three, Fort Riley, Fort Leavenworth, and McConnell, to schedule a meeting with them to be able to get the military's perspective on that 24-year-old. So that'll be forthcoming in the future. Any questions on the tours? Yes.
I appreciate Brad going out, because I just got back from DC with the Chamber of the Dodge City, Great Bend group. Is that May 18th a firm date? Is there any way that could be moved to the 19th?
We can, Penny's working with them. We're asking them to tell us what works in their schedule. It's a, I don't know if that is a normal chamber meeting, but Dodge and Great Bend?
No, Great Bend usually, no.
Well, those two chambers are trying to work together, so they're the ones that picked that date for us. So we, yeah, we can check with them. And we're trying to hit some communities that we weren't in on our regular tours, so.
Well, Great Bend, Great Bend will be very excited. I've been doing quite a bit of speaking in Great Bend, and they didn't somehow get the information in the community, so they will be thrilled. I've just, it's a conflict for me, and I'd like to be there.
We would like to have you there.
Well, thank you.
So we'll, we'll see if that works for them. The other, so as we work through the input that we've had, our goal is by this summer to be able to have the input that we've received from all of these analyzed, bring to you for your retreat, once Randy comes onboard, for you to be able to start setting your goals on. And then hopefully next fall then, we can then go back out to a lot of these locations and confirm, is this what you told us? Is this the direction that we're looking at going? So anyway, it's a, it's pretty exciting. Well, we're finding out with the software program that we're using, that you have to batch it and inputs of 100. And K-State, the ones we're working with, didn't, they were not aware that there was a limit, because they'd never had a qualitative study like this with this much input. So anyway, we're working through that. It's been very exciting initially, looking at the input and what the most common themes are, and breaking it down to, yeah, when you say skills, how many of those skills are communication skills, problem-solving skills, technical skills, academic skills? And so it's a, needless to say, our research staff is very excited with putting a lot of thought into what people are telling us is important. So the next thing I wanted to share with you, if you've been following the news, the Senate is today, and yesterday, and the day before, are having hearings on the reauthorization of Elementary and Secondary Education Act. I'm giving you the most updated version from CCSSU, Chief State School Officers, a crosswalk comparison between what the current No Child Left Behind law has, what the House bill, which is referred to as the Klein bill. There were substitutes for the House bill. That's the Scott ESEA substitutes. The Alexander Murray bill, which is the Senate's version that they're having hearings as we speak on. And then what we're currently living under, the requirements under the waiver. And I can tell you, I printed this yesterday, but they've already approved, as of end of day yesterday, 24 amendments to the Alexander bill. We don't know what they are, but at least kind of gives you an idea. I'm not, my goal isn't to walk through this. But the thing that we like about the Alexander Murray bill is it gives states the opportunity to design their own accountability plans as long as we hold, we're transparent, we make sure that our most needy students are having their needs met, we're truly identifying the schools that need the most resources for our, what we call our Kansas Learning Network. They let us design our own technical assistance plans that we provide. So if you recall, a couple months ago, this board unanimously approved to send a letter to our congressional delegation in support of this one. We met, and I don't know if Jim wants to, he may later on in his update, when we were in DC a few weeks ago, we met with our delegation. We were able to listen to the Klein-Murray proposal from Senator Klein, Representative Klein. We also met with Alexander and Murray. But as well as, we had the fortune, and I don't know the last time this happened, we got to spend as Chief State School Officers 45 minutes with the President, and basically shared, nobody's going to get everything they want. We would rather live as a state under our waiver than the old No Child Left Behind law. But the waiver is temporary, and we want ESEA reauthorized, and we support the Alexander model, because it's not a one-size-fits-all-for-all states. It has high accountability, but designed at the state level. And we encouraged the President and the Secretary of Education, if you get a bill, sign it. We can work on the details later on, but we don't want, in a few years from now, possibly getting a new president that gets rid of waivers, and we have to fall back on No Child Left Behind, which is not where we want to be. So this is just a crosswalk. As soon as I get updated with the amendments that were voted on and passed, I think they're considering five more today, but I'll just, we'll just try to keep you updated on where that's at. Any questions on that? The last thing I wanted to share with you, and my goal was for this to be something that you could fold up and put in your pocket. But then when you couldn't read any of it, that size, we went ahead and blew it up a little more. And this is not all-inclusive, but this is kind of a three-year layout. So when you get questions from the field, where are we with accreditation? Where are we with assessments? Standards revisions, career tech ed? There's topics along the left-hand side, and then there's a three-year. And these are very just elevator conversation bullets of, oh, well, next spring, we will be doing this in that area. This is not the work of our special ed and title programs. This is not a work of specific teams. These are things that may be brought to you for consideration down the road. For example, assessments, there's a lot going on in assessments, but we just want you to be aware, this summer, we'll be setting cut scores. And we'll be bringing to you in the early fall, August, to approve the new benchmarks, cut scores. So this doesn't include everything. We'll keep updating it and try to just get you updated. But when you're out and someone asks you a question on where are we at with certain topics, if there's things you're getting asked that's not on here, let me know, we'll include it. But these are just the ability for you to be able to maybe answer some questions that you're getting from the field. And the only last thing I had is I just wanted to share with you. I was invited, and I visited with Jim about this a month or two ago. The Council of Chief State School Officers has a, every year, they have a delegation that works with China. And every other year, a delegation goes to China, and then the other year, China comes to Kansas, or excuse me, maybe someday, to the United States. And I was offered the invitation to be one of the Chief State School Officers. There are six chiefs that they selected to go to China in May. Initially, I was like, well, I want to see the agenda first, because we're busy. But I'm giving you the agenda just to look at, we'll tour schools in Shanghai, and look what they're doing around the area of teacher preparation. But most importantly, we'll spend, be spending most of our time talking about, how do you assess whether students have the skills to be college and career-ready? And that's what was of most interest to me, was that it'd be nice to see what Shanghai, they've been doing some amazing things around measuring college and career readiness, kind of the conversation that we're doing with our tour on how do we change the measure of success? The only challenge with this, it's the same week as the May State Board meeting. So visiting with Jim, we have, between Dale and the other directors, they're all going to be here to make sure, you know, yeah, obviously, a lot of times, you probably don't even know I'm sitting here. But we will make sure that if you have questions during the May Board meeting, someone will be here at all times to answer your question. So I just wanted to update you on that. I think it's going to be a great experience to see how another country like China is addressing the area of college and career readiness, so. With that, I'm done.
Thank you. Any questions for Brad? Well, thank you, Brad. Okay, Janet?
Is it possible or impossible to know when there will be action on this ESEA reauthorization?
I would say impossible. Well, you know, what excites us, and again, I'm typically the glass-full person, but up until this year, I would say 0% probability. Now, I've been saying maybe 40%, but it keeps going up. Every time they get together and have a hearing, I think that probability goes up. But there is a lot of work going on right now that we have not had. I mean, it was supposed to be reauthorized in 2007, but this year is the first year that there are actual bills in both houses that are getting attention. And, you know, No Child Left Behind was very aggressive. They're trying to back off the federal role. It's just finding that ground. So I'm optimistic.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? I now declare the Citizens' Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:25 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share their views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name, the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification only. Our first speaker is Dr. Paul Adams, followed by Ken Weaver.
My name is Dr. Paul Adams, and I'm the interim dean of College Education Technology at Fort Hayes State University, also a physics professor there as well. I want to speak to the Innovative School District proposal that's coming up to vote for an exemption from licensure. And first off, I want to speak to two things, in particular, is a little bit about why I think that it should be a no vote, because of where I'm at, but also a consideration for the group here to do. First, I must say that my background is I am trained as a physics teacher, which means I got a master's in physics, and I've been an award-winning teacher at the national level. But I only credit that experience because of what I learned through teacher education and preparation about the pedagogical content knowledge. So that being said, that gives you a framework where I'm at. But the one thing I wanted to bring out is that I'm speaking now as a Regent's institution, is that we're making innovative and aggressive efforts to try to address shortages and preparation of teachers from across the state. In particular, Fort Hayes, I'll share with you just my experience, but I know talking with my colleagues at the other Regent's institutions, there are several innovative efforts to try to address any shortages that we have out there. In particular, the one, we have a program in place for secondary STEM that I won't address here, although that could be at a different time. But one of the things I do want to share is what we're doing to address the elementary need. In the last few years, you've heard there are shortages in elementary schools. And so the Teacher Education Department at Fort Hayes undertook an innovative program to develop a residency program in place in each of the, in school districts. Now, it's in its first year, it'll finish up its first year. And what we work with are the school districts coming to us and forming a partnership and say, we've got some people we'd like to get trained in elementary. They stay within their communities. If they've completed an associate's degree, or the gen eds, which could be done online, but they're in place because they're place-bound, local-bound, they're the people you know are going to stay there. And what we're able to do with that is to provide the critical training that they need to be a teacher, why they're employed in the district, why they're working, and move forward. And I think what's strong about this is that a program like this helps to address a critical need, and at the same time, retain what we have identified, what you have identified at KSDE and the State Board of Education, as a critical need to what we believe a teacher should be. And so I asked the Board to vote no, or at least take a chance to explore with the other Regent's institutions what innovative and aggressive programs are being done to address that need, because I think that some of these questions and shortages may already be addressed. And I think it's important we do this, because as Kansas citizens, and myself as a recently-elected school board member, my concern is quality education for every child, every day. And I know that's what I'll be doing as I step up at the local level, doing what you do as well. And I believe this is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Weaver, followed by Tammy Bartles.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ken Weaver, dean of the Teachers College at Emporia State University, and I'm speaking on the Innovative School District proposal. The deans of the Regent's institutions understand the desire for having the most highly effective teacher in every classroom. At the same time, we understand the pressures that superintendents face in finding well-qualified teachers for the positions they have to fill. Although the State Department of Education has made great strides in recent years to reduce barriers to licensure and innovative programs such as Emporia State's Alternate Route Restricted License Program that is preparing teachers all across the state, we acknowledge that there are unique cases deserving special attention. We advocate collaboratively finding ways to make certain that districts can hire individuals We advocate collaboratively finding ways to make certain that districts can hire individuals meeting the high standards the state has established. The current innovative district request to the State Board of Education generates concerns such as minimum requirements, ongoing professional learning needs, and scale-up considerations. We realize the intent of the Coalition of Innovative School Districts is a positive impact on student learning. However, no known country has positively impacted student learning by decreasing teacher qualifications and standards. Our own professional organizations are encouraging the field to increase the admission criteria in the teacher preparation. Kansas has a strong educational system due to a strong infrastructure and dedicated educators and leaders. The Regent's Deans are confident that we can work collaboratively with the Coalition and with the State Department of Education to meet student learning needs, maintain and improve quality, and uphold the teaching profession. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tammy Bartles, followed by Dr. Shane Kirschner.
My name is Tammy Bartles. I'm the president of Kansas PTA. I'm here representing our 20,000 members. I'm also a parent of a student in eighth grade and a student who will be graduating from the University of St. Mary's next month with her degree in secondary English education. So I've got a horse in this race twice. I am speaking on the Innovative School District's proposal to alter teacher licensure requirements and would like to encourage you on behalf of PTA to vote no on that. I was reading over the requirements this morning, and in reading them, it doesn't appear that the individual even has to have a high school degree in order to meet the qualifications to teach under this plan. There's nothing that says you must hire a licensed teacher if a licensed teacher has applied for that position and qualifies for it over another individual. Didn't see anything that says where the money for the training is going to come from. It says in the proposal that the school district would be responsible for training and professional development and support for these individuals, but there's, we know across the street, they continue to cut funds to schools, so where's that money going to come from? We can't do professional development now for our existing teachers. How are we going to support people who've not received that training? I also want to say that children are not an experiment. Our children are not an experiment. What happens to a child who gets a bad teacher, someone who's not able to manage a classroom? They lose that year of learning. They cannot make that up. We can't go back and give them a redo. I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Watson and especially Dr. Lane, who I work with a great deal, and I hear a lot, well, you need to trust us. Well, parents don't send our children to school because we trust the administrators, we trust teachers. We trust them because they have, we know that they've gone through a program that's taught them how to manage a classroom, that has taught them how to educate our children properly. We don't trust just individuals off the street with our children. We trust people who have received training. Up on the wall, it's so important to you, all you put, our students come first in every board decision. And that was such an important piece to this board that you posted it for everyone to see. But unfortunately, this sounds like a decision based more on what's best for a superintendent or a hiring director, not what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Shane Kirschner, followed by Nancy Damron.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak this morning. I am Dr. Shane Kirschner. I come to speak about the Coalition of Innovative School Proposal, and I come wearing many hats. I am here today as a former high school teacher in the McPherson School District. I'm a teacher educator at McPherson College. I'm currently the president of the Kansas Association College of Teacher Education, and most importantly, I'm a parent of two children enrolled in an Innovative School District, McPherson School District. I have several concerns about the recommendation to modify a licensure. Our district hired this year using the existing policy, an unlicensed teacher in one of the hard-to-fill positions, and it was not a very good experiment for any of our students, and I think most in our district would agree to that statement. This is one personal example of how trying to alter the licensure requirements was not very successful. I'm empathetic with the superintendent's struggles in how hard it is to find teachers, but I don't feel that this proposal is the right way to address the issue. I truly do believe that the proposal is designed with the best intentions, but the particular wording and the practicality is not there. I've heard stories of Ms. Mortimer from Concordia and Dr. Watson trying to hire a physics teacher in Concordia, trying to move a special ed teacher who was an award-winning teacher in our district, different levels, but not being able to meet the licensure requirements. So I truly understand that the issue's there in trying to get those to happen. As a teacher, I'm concerned about the image that this gives to teachers. We all know that teachers are not looked on favorably by all, and those in the profession know the dedication that is there. It makes me think my son running cross-country this year, when a student, one of the runners, passed out in the middle of the race, and seeing those teachers and coaches run to the aid and be there until the ambulance could get there, and the student was essentially lifeless on the ground for about 15 minutes before the ambulance could get there, and knowing that we have teachers who are willing to do that, you know, teachers are dedicated individuals, and in some ways, by hiring non-licensed people, we're giving a slap in the face to professional teachers. As a teacher educator, I'm concerned about the future of the profession. We have many accreditation regulations that were mentioned, and it's getting challenging to meet all of those requirements, and we're being pushed at a higher level, and this is taking away all of those. As a teacher educator, there are issues with how are we going to be able to meet, will we be able to place student teachers in our schools if we don't have licensed personnel in those buildings? I'm glad to see the Board is postponing this with an opportunity to get further input. And to that end, I've even talked to Randy Watson, as he is my local school board president or superintendent this time, and I threw my head out to say, Randy, I'd like to serve, I'd be willing to serve as a representative of teacher ed on the Coalition to help put some additional input in. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nancy Damron, followed by Eric?
Magette.
Magette. Okay, thank you, Eric.
Well, thank you for giving us time to speak today. I'm the dean of the School of Education at Mid-America Nazarene University, and actually sent each of you a letter. And so first, I can just say, I reiterate what's been shared here today, but my point in speaking is not specifically just to ask for a no vote on the proposal. Specifically, we know that local control honors the idea that those closest to an issue should have the greatest say in how to solve that problem. My issue with the Coalition proposal is that a primary stakeholder was not included in that process of solving the issue of teacher shortages, and those would be the education preparation programs. So people like all of the deans who have spoken, the unit heads that have spoken, every one of us have dedicated our lives to the study of how to prepare teachers for the classroom for the same reason as you, and that is to give our P-12 students the best educators possible. I also am a member of a school, or excuse me, a parent in a school district, an innovative school district, and I have kids in that school. And I want to make sure that my kids have the best preparation, the best preparation for their future, and that includes having teachers who are prepared for that. And so today, what I'm asking for is that you consider the idea that the proposal needs to take a step back, which obviously you already have because I know that we're not voting on that today. However, I'm asking for a step back and an encouragement, actual statement from the Board to the Coalition to include education preparation programs in this planning process to solve the problem of teacher shortages. We know from research that preparation matters. In fact, attrition rates are greatly increased when teachers don't have, don't have the preparation that they need, and that means human resource costs at school districts will increase because inductions will take longer periods of time, they'll have to go through the hiring process more as well. So what we see right now is just in an attempt to solve the problem quickly, we think that a primary key contributor hasn't been involved in this discussion, and we could only add to the solution, to bring about something that truly meets the needs of everyone involved. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Eric Magette, with Kate Thompson to follow.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today about the Coalition Proposal. My name is Eric Magette, as has been mentioned, and I teach science at Udora High School in Douglas County. I want to say a special hello to Board Member Waugh, who represents my district, and also to represent, or Board Member Roberts, who spent some time with us a few weeks ago. We enjoyed having you there. Todd Rose, who's a professor of education at Harvard, likes to talk about a difficult situation that faced the Air Force in the 1950s. And to make a long story short, he tells that we had the best pilots flying some of the best planes in the world, but we were getting worse results than we ever had before. And the problem, it turned out, was in the design of our aircraft, and specifically in the design of the cockpit of our aircraft, which was designed for an average-sized fighter pilot. In studying this problem, a researcher named Gilbert Daniels took a series of 10 measurements from over 4,000 Air Force fighter pilots, everything from how tall they were to how far they could reach, to how big their thighs were. And in looking at all this data, Daniels realized that not a single one of the people flying these jets was actually average, when you took into account all of the variables that allow for a smooth fit between the pilot and the cockpit. What the Air Force had done then in designing a fighter jet to fit an average pilot was designing a fighter jet that fit absolutely no pilots. Todd Rose refers to this as the myth of average, and as the story illustrates, average does not exist, and when we design for average, we set ourselves up for failure. The lesson that the Air Force learned was that to truly innovate, to push the boundaries of speed, altitude, and performance, they had to stop designing for average, and instead they had to design towards the edges. Was this more expensive? Sure. Was it less efficient? Absolutely. And did it make the process of designing cockpits for the aircraft more difficultly, more difficult? It definitely did. But when faced with a situation where the difference between success and failure was often measured in milliseconds or millimeters, they had absolutely no choice. And the same is true in education. Each day at Udora High School, we welcome about 400 students into the hallways, classrooms, and common spaces. And while we can talk about what an average student in our school might look like, or learn like, or sound like, we know that where the rubber meets the road in the classroom, there is no such thing as average. You see, while average is a metric that describes populations, teachers specialize in individuals. Professionally certified and licensed teachers recognize that each and every student differs in their own unique way. And for those of us who love what we do, it's this diversity that's one of the things that we really, really love about the students that we serve. And these professionally certified and licensed teachers have the education, training, and experience to adapt what they do to meet the needs of these unique individual students, not at a spot that's average, but at the spot where that particular student happens to be at that particular moment in time. Much like the Air Force, we educators have to realize that innovation is going to come not from looking at the easiest or most efficient solution to our complex problems, it's going to come when we challenge the professionals in our schools to design towards the edges. We have to recognize that one-size-fits-all efficiency doesn't work when we're talking about diverse people interacting with complex systems. For the Air Force, it was fighter pilots and cockpits. We have to learn the same lesson regarding teachers and students. And like the Air Force in the 1950s, we simply have no choice. I ask you therefore to reject this proposal in order to assure that each student, each classroom, or great state is taught by a professionally certified and licensed teacher, someone with the education, training, and experience to provide them with an instruction that is anything but average. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kate Thompson, followed by Dana Richardson.
Good morning. My name is Kate Thompson. I'm a librarian teacher in Olathe, Kansas, and I'm speaking as a member of the Kansas National Education Association. I'm a nationally board-certified with over 30 years of professional experience as a speech and drama teacher, a middle, elementary, and high school librarian, and I am here to speak in opposition of the Coalition of Innovative Districts licensure waiver. I am offended with the suggestion that someone with no knowledge of the science of education can be at the most an effective or even competent teacher. Great teachers are trained in the art and science of teaching. It is one thing to be an expert in a content area, but it is another, and this is where pedagogy comes into play, to be able to convey that knowledge to the students. How does a teacher differentiate lessons for students who are not native speakers or who have learning disabilities? A professional teacher has the skills to provide quality instruction for these students, and that is in part due to the teacher's college-level training and ongoing professional development, which provides the educator with the experience to determine what type of educational strategies to use in any given situation. It is unfortunate that Kansas has already lowered the standards for teachers with House Bill 2506, which allows for vacancies in the STEM areas to be filled with individuals who do not have any education coursework or experience in the practice of teaching. While lowering the standards for teachers, Kansas continues to raise the standards for students. This is inconsistent. It makes no sense. Children have only one opportunity for a good education. Our students, students need well-prepared professional teachers who have engaged in the study of literacy, child development, and adolescent psychology, cultural diversity, the needs of students with disabilities, and the nature of testing. There is no evidence that having a specialized certificate enhances teaching performance, but there is substantial credible evidence that professional licensure ensures that students are engaged in purposeful learning experience. In closing, I implore you to consider the children of Kansas and to continue with one of the best educational systems in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Richardson, followed by Nancy Bolts.
Hi, I'm Dana Richardson, and today I'm representing, I kind of have two hats. The first one is KLFA, Kansas Lady First Alliance. We actually are meeting today across town, and since Kathy couldn't come because you had her here, we came to see her. And so that's, we have come to visit with Kathy. And so we miss her at our meeting, seriously. We are glad to be here. There are several of us here representing KLFA, and if you don't know who we are, we're an organization of 35. We've got a new organization just this year that come together to focus on kind of three big rocks, the things we have in common. We focus on student success, professional learning, and community engagement. So we just love to partner with each other, and we have lots of folks here everywhere, from higher ed to great, she left, great PTA, she has just been one of our best community people, and so we are just wanting to share with you and know that we're here to support you, and we appreciate what you do all the time, too. I'm going to talk about professional learning, obviously. A year ago today at this meeting, Stephanie Hirsch, who is the executive director of Learning Board at the national level, came here and talked to you about professional learning, and she came back in June and talked to you and KLFA and the State Department. We kept her very, very busy. And she challenged each of us to say, how do we move professional learning from knowing to doing and make it an action in the classroom? Because she says, unless we change our practice, it's been a waste of time. So we want to challenge each of us, how do we continue to put professional learning on the front of the plate every time we make a decision? We're going to make some decisions or some conversations this afternoon about our new accreditation model. What's that going to look like in a tiny school district in Pretty Prairie? What's that going to look like in Shawnee Mission? And what kind of professional learning do we want to be sure is there so we're successful? Because we know, we've heard it from some other speakers, one size does not fit all. And we want all of us to get over the bridge over here so that we're good in the classroom, whether we're classroom teachers, whether we're school builders, all of those things. So we want, I'm going to challenge all of us, do we have some practices or some policies in place that are hindering our getting over that bridge? And if so, what can we do collaboratively, working together, to remove some barriers so that we really, really have excellent classroom teachers, excellent principals, excellent educators in every school and in every classroom? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Bolts, followed by Ethel Edwards.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Bolts, and I am representing Advance Ed. Some of you may know it as North Central Association or NCA. It was 100 years with that name, so it's recently changed. I'm also here, probably more importantly, representing my two daughters, Maria and Sophia. That said, I've had the pleasure of working as an educator in our public schools for 20 of my 34 years as an educator. During that time, I also have spent 25 years as a student. Evidently, and I'm guessing you would conclude, and you'd probably be right, I like schools, I like being in schools. That said, why did I like being in schools? And it would come to quality teachers. Those people play a very important role in all of our children's lives, and I want that for my daughters because I had that, and everyone deserves that. That said, Advance Ed accredits 32,000 schools all over the United States and internationally, and one of those things we recognize as an absolutely foundational point is that we have quality teachers in classrooms. And we actually don't absolutely require that teachers are licensed. You might be surprised by that. On the other hand, we do require that they have a college education and a good, solid pedagogy. pedagogical coursework to back that up. So while we don't draw a line in the sand on licensure, we do look for ways to make sure that they have that, those similar kinds of qualifications for licensure. That said, I want to talk about who else gets licensed? Does the person that cuts your hair have a license? People that do your nails, do your plumbing? That's important to us, but my goodness, as Tammy pointed out, I like to think that it's important that we have licensed people for our students. They probably are the most important. And finally, I want to speak to what matters for teachers. As you well know, many teachers have a pay differential. They go into teaching not for the big bucks. They go into teaching because they want to make a difference. They want to be valued. They want to feel like they have some control over what's going on in their environment, and that all leads to job satisfaction. And you probably have noticed that we're being beaten up pretty well politically right now. And so what I'd like to think is that this highest body representing teachers and boards, the educational process, I'd like to see you in a supporting role of teachers because that's probably one of your most important roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Roberts had a question for clarification.
Yes. For some career in tech ed, folks who may not have a college degree, say the welder or the person teaching auto shop, are they not able to be certified under your auspices if they don't have that college degree?
That is correct. They need some sort of job certification or college degree combination, but they have to have pedagogical coursework as well. They may not go clear through and do the licensure piece, but they have to have that pedagogical piece.
Does it have to be bachelor's level, or can they work at the associate's level?
They need to have a college degree.
Will the associate's suffice then? Associate-level degree?
No, I think it needs to be bachelor's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ethel Edwards, followed by Alvin Peters.
My name is Ethel Edwards, and I am speaking on item number ten. I have experience as a student teacher a very long time ago, a teacher of mathematics and language arts at the secondary level, a mentor teacher of first-year teachers and alternate certification teachers, an evaluator of teachers, and a supervising teacher of student teachers. It is true that highly effective teachers have a strong background in the content they are teaching. However, studies continually show that this is only one component of an effective teacher. To be successful, a teacher must have a toolbox that includes developmentally appropriate instruction, and instruction that is differentiated to meet the needs of all students, especially when a classroom is culturally diverse and has students with special needs, from learning disabilities to second-language learners to giftedness. In addition, an effective teacher has a plethora of classroom management techniques and strategies, classroom discipline strategies, anti-bullying strategies, and time-management strategies, all in that toolbox. I will never forget my eighth year of teaching. I had an eighth-grade mathematics class from hell. Without the pedagogical background from my college classes, that year could have been my last year as a teacher. If that had been the case, I would not have had the opportunity to be a past president of the Kansas Association of Teachers of Mathematics, or been employed by the Kansas State Department of Education, first as a Title I consultant, and then as the mathematics consultant, or now serving as president of NEA Topeka, or celebrating my thirty-eighth year in education. Yes, there is a shortage of teachers in the great state of Kansas. There is a system in place established by KSDE and the universities and colleges of Kansas that address this shortage. This waiver not only diminishes the teaching profession, it shortchanges our students who deserve a highly qualified licensed teacher. Would you take a cooking class from someone who doesn't cook? Would you send your child to a doctor who hasn't been to medical school? Why would you hire a person as a teacher who has never gone through an accredited teacher education program? What message does this send our students? Thank you for our time, for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alvin Peters, followed by Joan Bolt.
I am Alvin Peters, a national board-certified teacher from Garnett. I was, when I read through, by the way, I'm speaking on the same topic everybody else is, what a surprise. When I read through the documents that were available online from the Coalition, one of the things that struck me was it said twice qualified person, but never defined the word qualified. When I taught debate, we always told students the first thing you have to do is define your terms. Now, there are stories I could tell you that are extreme of things that happen in education when you don't define a term. But I think I'd rather phrase the quote from the late Supreme Court Justice Felix Frankfurter, who once said, "I believe it's important to know where one is going before one begins." I think the term qualified, we need to find out what are the minimum qualifications? It could be a PhD. It could be breathing. What's the minimum qualification? That's a question that needs to be answered, and I would urge the board to ask those questions and get those answers before adopting this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Bolt, followed by Tom Krebs.
I guess I better run up there so I can get my minute started as soon as my name is called.
You're fine.
You're welcome to Wiggle because I'm used to working with kids at Wiggle, and I think Ethel's eighth-grade class thirty-some years ago is reincarnated into my first graders this year. So I think it comes around. Special hi to Brad, who was at my school district at one time. My name is Joan Bolt, and I'm an elementary PE and health teacher, and I represent Keford and Kansas Shape America, as it's been recently called. They asked me to come and speak, so this is kind of a commercial, on a program we're doing at our school that collaborates the physical education department with the Accelerated Reader Department, improving both aspects. And so kind of have a commercial, so I have a video to show. One minute. This program is called Read to Play. My kids helped me come up with it. As in my school kids.
We want to tell you about a fun program we are doing at school this year to help us get healthy through play. The AR program partnered with our school PE program to come up with our reading for activity program.
Mrs. Hane, what is accelerated reading?
Important part of our reading curriculum. AR is a computer-based system that rewards points for books read.
What's your philosophy for PE?
I want the students to grow up knowing how important it is to keep their bodies healthy. We just thought this was a great connection and a great opportunity for us to put the two together and come up with this fantastic program.
First, you read books. Then you take an AR test on the computer. You collect points until you reach enough to receive a fat token. Your teacher will give that to you. The letters in fat stands for free activity token. Then every Wednesday morning, turn in your token to the PE teacher. She has some great activities for us to do. We play until it is time to begin school for the day.
Eat smart and play hard!
Oh, they truly enjoyed putting that together.
We want to tell you about a fun program we are doing at school this year to help us get healthy through play.
Yeah, I'm PE, I'm not tech.
The AR program partnered with our school PE program to come up with our reading for activity program.
Mrs. Hane, what is it?
Basically, that's what it is. They get, they bring in their free activity time token, and they get to play in the morning until school starts. And every quarter or nine weeks, they get a free recess when they hit a tier from reading. And then at the end of the year, we do an off-campus activity. We've done bowling and frisbee golf last year, but we did bowling. This is our fourth year, and it is a cultural in our school now, so everybody knows about it, it's expected, it just happens every year. We really enjoy it. We have done testing the first two years stats and found out that it did improve reading scores, and the students enjoyed it, and the sped kids, it was huge for them. So I want to thank you for your time, and with the last ten seconds, I want to tell you that I am supporting all of those guys there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tom Krebs, followed by Mark Tullman.
Good morning, Chair McNeese, and members of the State Board. I'm Tom Krebs from the Kansas Association School Boards, and I'm bringing you some updates on financial literacy, which is an important element of interest at your level and certainly our members. I'm pleased to note a partnership has been forged between you and the legislature, particularly the Education Committee of the House and Senate. A letter has been drafted by a subcommittee of the House Education Committee at the request of Committee Chair Ron Hyland, a Republican from Omegle. It was decided after holding a hearing on House Bill 2232, which, by the way, mandated a graduation class for graduation. If anything, the bill should be amended to support the joint testimony of KSB and the Kansas Council for Economic Education. Our position this year, as in 2013, is every district will have a policy outlining how financial literacy will be managed in the district. There are no other mandates, not for graduation or specified curriculum. An amendment to that effect was prepared at the request of Representative John Barker from Abilene. After further consideration about the need for a statutory approach, Chair Hyland formed a subcommittee to tackle the issue through a cooperative effort between the State Board, the Legislature, and local boards of education. It was chaired by Representative Amanda Grossroad, and I think she's from Monex and not over in Park. The letter has been drafted, but legislative protocol demands the letter move through specific channels, specifically the Speaker's Office and the Legislative Coordinating Council. As a result, there has not been a final copy released, but the draft reviewed at the last subcommittee meeting April one tentatively gained approval of not only the subcommittee, but also a number of interested parties, including KSB. Dean Horst was, attended those meetings on behalf of the State Board. The entire subcommittee approved the letter on April 2nd, the last day of the regular session. The letter will strongly urge every district to address financial instruction in terms of meeting the expectations set out in the Rose capacities. KSB will stress the importance of this opportunity when it starts its advocacy tour, which starts the end of May and runs the end of June. At least ten events will be held across the state. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Oh, you're good. Our next speaker is Mark Tullman, followed by Gwen Landver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the State Board. I am Mark Tullman, also with KSB. Tom and I are talking about two different issues. He took the highly controversial issue of financial education, I guess, and I get to give you a completely different view on the issue of licensure under the Innovative Districts proposal. We are appearing today in support of the concept of the specialized teaching certificate. I want to just briefly explain why you have my written remarks, but I simply want to go back. Our reason for focus is based on positions that our membership has taken. And I will tell you that every year, KSB votes on our policies, and I'm always willing to say I could be here in another year giving you a completely different position if that's what our delegate assembly reached. But I can tell you, in the past, our reason I'm here today is not so much our focus on the issue of licensure, but on the focus of innovative districts. We did support the new bill, that bill that was passed two years ago, because we felt it offered the possibility of more flexibility in exchange for higher student success goals. I think that's the point that was always missed about our support for that concept. We support the idea of allowing districts more flexibility to try different things to get better results. And if they don't get better results, the penalty is they can lose the ability to do that. And so conceptually, we see this issue as just one more thing as a part of that. Listening to some of the other folks, I wanted to conclude, and this is not in my written document, but I just want to perhaps give something to think about. The only places where this proposal would apply are districts where the board has sought this approval, the State Board of Education has given approval to be an innovative district, and then only in teaching positions where a licensed-trained administrator believes they have found a person that should teach, and then that position and that person is approved by a local board elected by and accountable to the members of their district. So we think that is a pretty narrow range in which to try something might work, might not work. But this is about trying different things to try to get better success for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Glenn, Gwen, excuse me, Gwen Landver, followed by Terry Collins.
Hi there. Usually, my last name gets messed up, so I appreciate that. I'm Dr. Gwen Landver. I'm the Chair of the Education Department at University of St. Mary. I am actually here representing the Professional Standards Board, which I am a member of, and I'm also parent of two elementary-age students in one of the innovative school districts currently. And I am speaking against the recommendation for a licensure waiver for the Coalition of Innovative Districts. I was here back in January presenting to this board that, and you did go ahead and approve the professional ed standards, and at that time, we talked a lot about why pedagogy is important, so I just wanted to remind you of that. Many of my colleagues here today addressed many of my concerns in detail, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I did want to share with you that the Professional Standards Board met last Monday, the thirteenth, and we did discuss this issue, and we did send a letter to you, but I wanted to share that information with the board as a whole. We did meet and discuss under New Business, and we had a very involved discussion related to innovative coalition licensing, and the Professional Standards Board mission is to promote excellence in the educational profession and develop and review professional standards to ensure quality preparation and continued professional growth experiences. The Innovative Schools, the Innovative Districts' request to waive all standards for educators in Kansas classrooms is in direct opposition to the board's stated mission. This group of professional educators, which includes teachers and leaders, engaged in extensive discussion articulating concerns about this proposal. It was moved, seconded, and unanimously passed to express our strong opposition to the Coalition of Innovative Districts' request for waiver from all educator licensure standards. It was noted that the Kansas Department of Education's Teacher Licenseur and Accreditation Division has made significant strides in eliminating barriers to licensure at the request of the State Board of Education. And I just want to say I'm happy that the board is postponing the vote today to study this more in detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Terry Collins, followed by Harry McDonald.
As he said, my name is Terry Collins. I represent the Kansas Association of Specialiated Administrators. I'm also the Director of the Donovan County Special Education Cooperative. I'm here today to give you some feedback and a little update on emergency safety interventions. The Specialized Advisory Council, the Kansas Association of Specialiated Administrators, and Ken Willard have all been heavily involved with the Senate Ed Committee and the Conference Committee, who have developed a, I think is a very good plan, which essentially keeps the regulations intact, but develops a task force to study any possible concerns or complaints that the original stakeholders of that, of the development of the regulations might have. So now, it's still in Conference Committee, they've recessed, they'll open back up in the veto session, and hopefully the Senate bill will pass forward. You know, if it doesn't, if they can't reach a conclusion, then it most likely will kill that bill and we'll start all over next legislative session. The other thing that I wanted to inform you about, you may or may not know that there has been some type of a complaint filed against the state of Kansas regarding students with disabilities and civil rights. I was contacted by the Midwestern Regional Office in Chicago, Illinois, for the United States Commission on Civil Rights and asked if I would testify at an investigative hearing that occurred on March 25th. I did agree to do that, and it turns out that there was, there were, there were some folks there that believed that the State Board and the Kansas Department of Education have done nothing regarding emergency safety interventions or exclusion restraint for a ten-year period. That was said there. It was also said there that... It was also said there that for the last two years, many parents have been brought before the State Board to complain about the current regulations and that you were unresponsive to that. I don't recall that. I've been here now six months in a row and I don't recall any of that happening, but that was testified. I've been told by David Musat, who organized that, that prior to any final decisions, that he would send me a copy of what they were intending to decide, and I'll be happy to share that with you. I very fortunately was, at the last minute, on the 24th, they found my name and asked me to testify on behalf of what Kansas has been doing regarding emergency safety interventions. Also, Laura Jurgensen from KSDE was able to testify and did outstanding job of defending the things that this board and the State Department has done for the last two years. And that's really all I wanted to do, is give you a couple of updates, and we hope that things are gonna, gonna, gonna go back in the direction that they were. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Harry McDonald, followed by Jill Jones.
Good morning. Yes, I am Harry McDonald. Thanks for the chance to speak here. I am the President of Kansas Citizens for Science and a board member of the mainstream coalition. And although I'm certain that my views to be expressed here are consistent with both those organizations, I haven't had the opportunity to check with them, so I'll speak today as an individual. I am a veteran of 43 years in education, both as a teacher and consultant, and am a Presidential Award winner in math and science education. I did spend two years in the Army, and I would start with that, in that the Army, whether you were in or not, I'm sure you all know, starts with basic training. And that's kind of like your, if we want to put it in today's terms, your BS degree. But the Army doesn't send anybody out in any job, including infantrymen, if all they've done is go through basic training. They all have to go and be trained for a military occupational specialty. Now, the state of Kansas has established boards to govern the licensing of professionals, where the health, safety, and welfare of Kansans are at stake. None of these boards allows someone to practice a profession without evidence of competency. So although you are being asked to give a license to people, it isn't really a license unless they qualify. And there are no qualifications under the proposal from the innovative schools. I don't think, despite Mr. Tullman's talk about the boards of education, I don't think that we are willing in any of the professions and other boards licensed in Kansas to let people practice a profession with no training, just because we happen to have a shortage. I don't think we're going to address the doctor shortage in western Kansas by just letting anybody with no other qualification but wants to be a doctor to go out and see if they can't do something positive. It's just a small little trial. How can that be bad? So the Coalition of Innovative Schools Board is requesting permission to license without the evidence of competence. You should deny this request. Based on what logical principle would you assume that doctors, lawyers, plumbers, barbers, cosmetologists, tattooists, real estate agents, et cetera, need specialized training to practice, but teachers do not? You already have alternative license possibilities for people, where districts can hire anyone they want that has a degree, some with a license to teach outside that area of license, some who don't even have a license, but the qualifier is they all have to agree to go through a program of preparation. So why do we want to bring people into our classroom who aren't willing to do that? If they're willing to become professionals, they already have an avenue that you've provided. And if they're not willing to become professionals, why should we let them play around with our kids' education? So you are actually, if you are actually the board establishing licensure regulations for innovative schools, if your scheduled vote, even if it's not today, actually means that you have the right to say no to this proposal, then you must vote against this irresponsible request. Your integrity and the welfare of those that you are elected to protect demands it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jill Jones, followed by Nikki Meyer.
Good morning. My name is Jill Jones and I'm here representing Emporia State University, talking about the innovative districts issue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I feel that I bring a unique perspective to this discussion, as I have been that professional in the public sector, private sector rather, that became a teacher. I was a public school teacher for nine years at Emporia, after working in human resources for a private company for two years. I decided to make a change, go back to school, get my elementary ed degree at Emporia State, where I am now an instructor in the elementary education program, training future highly-qualified teachers. Teaching is hard. If you've ever been in the classroom, other than being a student, you know how hard it is. As a new teacher, I was worried about surviving the day, teaching my students the best I could, wondering what tomorrow might bring. It wasn't my first job. I wasn't a 22-year-old coming out of college, starting in the classroom, didn't know what hard work was. I worked long hours at my previous job. But this was different. Working with children in an educational setting was exhausting, and amazing, and stressful, and inspiring. I took my new profession very seriously. It was up to me to educate these children and do everything I could to make them problem solvers and critical thinkers. It was only through my program of study that I gained a strong foundation provided by my education at Emporia State University and my student teaching experience. Yes, I did learn a ton in those first few years of teaching that was invaluable, but with my background knowledge, I was able to apply strategies, reflect on my practice, understand the experiences I was having, and find ways to improve my instruction. It takes several years of special training in order to become an effective educator. Meeting the needs of all your students is a well-choreographed dance that requires a high level of content and pedagogical knowledge in order to make the best decisions for your students. The demands of our student needs are ever-increasing with our changing population. We have higher numbers of students with second language barriers, students receiving special education services, and students living in poverty. The children of Kansas cannot afford someone who starts out in a profession already behind in their colleagues without a strong knowledge base. With the proposed changes, new teachers will be trying to learn their foundational skills from their school district while working in the classroom. The daily requirements of a teacher are great: lesson planning, communicating with parents, grading papers, classroom management. It doesn't allow time for an in-depth study about pedagogy and effective practice. Each district seems to have their own unique way of looking at things and curriculums and programs that they use. I worry teachers trained by a school district would just receive the professional development they need to make it in their district. What happens if they have to move? What happens if that training doesn't meet all of their students' needs? What background will these teachers still have to provide a quality education for everyone? I ask the board, please protect the teaching profession and give the children of Kansas the best possible future they can by putting a highly-qualified professional in every classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nikki Meyer, followed by Kirk Fast.
Good morning. My name is Nikki Meyer, and I am a kindergarten teacher here in Topeka and a Kansas Teacher of the Year semifinalist for 2015. I'm due here today due to the concerns over this same proposal for the innovative school districts. We've heard a great deal about standards and increasing our expectations through the Common Core state standards for our students. So why would we expect more of our students and less of our teachers? Even substitute teachers in our state are required to accumulate 60-plus college credits in order to be in the classroom. I've seen many substitutes that I would not trust or want in my classroom with my students, yet we want the standard to be lower, not even requiring any post-education to certify teachers. Teaching is a profession that requires more than just knowledge of a subject. Just because you know how to read doesn't mean you know how to teach reading. Just because you sat at a desk as a student for 13 years doesn't mean you know how to be a teacher. We would not trust a doctor that didn't attend med school, or a lawyer that didn't attend law school, and all of the different professions that have been brought up here today. In no other profession would this be acceptable. We need you to advocate for our profession, raise the standards, and not just let anyone in. The time, energy, finances, and desire that is invested from those of us who want to be highly-qualified teachers should not be diminished. The art of teaching and knowing your students' needs is complex. For example, a person without proper training in early childhood might not understand the kinesthetic value, the sensory integration, the fine motor control, and the physical development that comes from finger painting. In math, there are plenty of people that are good at number crunching, but don't understand truly how the processes and the algorithms work. These people would not be, these people would be unable to make important connections for students, which is especially alarming under the expectations of the Common Core. Every student deserves to have a dedicated teacher who understands the science of the profession and has risen to the high expectations of receiving a teacher license. A teacher understands development, psychology, brain function, classroom management, and learning styles, and those are just a few key aspects in our pedagogy. We have current successful alternate processes to obtain a teaching license. Why lower standards when successful provisional avenues already exist? If it was your child, grandchild, or someone you love, are you okay with their teacher being someone who has passed a background check as their only qualification? We must strive to find a solution that is best for kids, not an easy fix for adults. I ask you, is this what is best for kids? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kirk Fast, followed by Dave Trebert.
Hi, I'm Kirk Fast. I'm from Ozaki, Parrott, actually an occasional emergency substitute teacher. When this board, as currently comprised, first sat that January, I guess a year and a half ago, my first public comments were on this very topic. I sensed this coming down the pike. It worried me. I've spoken about it then, I've spoken about this, I'm not sure, three, maybe four other times. Today, wow, all you people that spoke, teachers, deans, I'm so impressed. I certainly hope that this board will go and review these tapes and these comments and really listen clearly, closely, pick out every item that has been presented, weigh it amongst yourselves if you can possibly support this concept of alternative licensing after that and after them. I don't know how you're going to reach that decision. That having been said, I really actually, when I understood what was going on here today, it's like I knew I couldn't add anything to what these very dedicated professionals would most likely be saying today. But the way Mr. Neuswander started out about the, with his commissioner's report and the community feedback and the statewide tour that went on, I really want to commend that as well. Because, one, it started off with a great question. What's a 25-year-old supposed to look like as far as being college and career-ready? You know, a great question. I attended the one here in Topeka and participated in it, and I imagine it was representative of the others that went on, and a great cross-section of students, teachers, you know, consumers and fools like myself were all participating. One thing that I thought really stood out was there were school students who attended, and each one was asked to sit with a table of the adults that were present, so that we could all be assured of getting actual student input into this process and decision-making. I don't think you can improve upon the design of that, and certainly what's being done with the information already presented and the results that are being crunched by the folks at KSU, as Mr. Neuswander mentioned, I have no doubt that will have great, great value in helping guide you with the agendas that come up to you from that in the future. Certainly, the value of just people's input versus those who have other items that are important to them, like the Chamber of Commerce and KPI and folks like that, these are the people that you all are elected by. They may not provide the same kind of cash support that the others do, but please, I'm sure the results will be immensely valuable. And personally, I want to thank you, Mr. Neuswander, for, I assume that was, you had a big hand in coming up with that idea. It's also a great way to introduce the upcoming commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker and our final speaker for this morning is Dave Trebert.
Thank you, everyone. I want to get my stopwatch started here. I am here to speak to you today on three separate issues, very briefly, of transparency. And I'm going to ask that these be passed out. There's three different sets there. The first issue deals with reporting the accurate and number of school district employees across the state. We've been surprised to learn that there are actually 5,284 more school district employees than the Department of Education reports, because there are 26 school districts that are not reported. These are not unified school districts, but they are school districts. We found this information by looking at employment changes. We noticed, as you'll see here on the top page of the handout when they get across, the El Dorado School District last year had 588.9 full-time equivalent employees in special education. This year, they have none. And we asked what happened, where they went, and it turns out that they went to work for an inter-local, which is a school district, but is not a unified school district. They still exist, they are still school district employees, but they're not counted as school district employees according to the information published by the Department of Education. So we would, because we all know that, you probably all remember some of the commercials we heard during the recent election, as to what happened to how many school district employees there were and how many, whether they increased or decreased. Turns out, none of that information was based on accurate data, because the Department of Education only publishes employment and spending for unified school districts. So we're here to ask you to direct the department to publish information for all school districts, not just unified school districts. On a related matter of special ed, the department's policy on special ed co-ops for accounting is different from special ed inter-locals. An inter-local has the spending of the districts recorded on all the participating districts' books. If a district is in a special ed co-op, then the host district has all of the costs recorded on that district, which overstates that district and understates the costs of all the participating districts. So we would encourage you to direct the department to change those accounting rules so that it is reported the same, so that all districts have accurate reporting. And finally, in the handouts, I'll note that we found at least two recent, this week, instances of school district superintendents reporting inaccurate information to the public on school funding, specifically related to school funding block grants. These are written statements that have been made, and we provide the documentation to show that what they've been publishing is not accurate. And we would encourage the board to encourage all school districts to report information accurately and honestly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have clarification question from John Bacon.
Thank you. Which document did you give us that, does it indicate which districts or what superintendents we're referring to?
In the handouts that are coming down, it was USD 437 Auburn Washburn. And the other one was, I forget the district number, but it was Udora.
Okay, so that would be on this.
That one is Auburn Washburn. And then there's another one, a handout that talks about, it shows the quotes what is being reported by the Udora superintendent, which is not accurate according to information we obtained from the Department of Education.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. The State Board Citizens Open Forum is closed at 11:30. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. We're going to take a break now till 11:40. I want to thank the WestEd folks for being patient with us. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you very much. The WestEd Corporation has conducted some external evaluation measures of our multi-tiered system of support, and Dr. Scott Smith is here to introduce them and to follow the report on Kansas MTSS.
Yes, sir, I am. I'll be very brief in the introduction. As you said, we have, very fortunate to have with us today, Kristin Myers-Reedy. As you said, we have, very fortunate to have with us today, Kristin Myers-Reedy and Natalie Losereno-Pacquet, and I think you have their bios in your packet, checked beforehand. We also have the coordinator of Kansas MTSS, Lynda Wilkerson. She's here, behind the pillar, as well as the TAZN Coordinator Team, and they've been instrumental in helping provide training and implementation. Crystal Davis and Kevin Davis are here with us today. And just as a matter of introduction, just, MTSS is sort of a perennial, seems like a perennial initiative for us today. It was initiated in 1992, ramped up significantly in 2007. It's a school improvement framework that focuses on high-quality core instruction for all students. And Kansas, the KSDE let out an RFP for an external evaluation of the training and implementation of MTSS, and WestEd was, was just the group to help us do that. So they are with us today. With that, I'll let them have the podium.
Can you hear me okay? I'm a little shorter. Great. We're so pleased to be here today. Kristin and I are going to tag team a little bit throughout the presentation, so you don't get bored and I don't lull you to sleep with my voice alone, or her voice alone, but we are very excited to be here. We have been working in the state for four years. We have been helped tremendously by the TAZN team and the core team and the KSDE in terms of being able to carry out this evaluation and collect data that we need to help answer some questions that we'll tell you about. So today, what we want to do is we want to take some time to go through our findings, really give you a sense of the current status of implementation of MTSS, share what we've learned about what it takes to implement well, and then we also want to discuss sort of what's next, what we learned about what's next in terms of going forward and sustainability. So we do have a presentation we want to go through, and then we'll have some time for questions and discussion at the end. I'll use the arrows. So as Dr. Smith said, we did respond to a request for proposals in 2010 to design, refine, and implement an evaluation system that measures the implementation of MTSS, the progress of MTSS statewide. And really, just to understand the purpose, was to assess the progress towards the goal of creating a statewide system of support to local schools and districts in order to increase schools' capacity, to use all of their resources to enable every child to be successful. And so in doing this, we really provide a complete picture of MTSS implementation, as well as look at early impacts. The evaluation was guided by five evaluation questions. I won't read them, read them all, but they're up on the screen for you to see. They really addressed five topics, however. The scope, which is really how, how broad is it being spread across the state? Who's participating? What are characteristics of the schools and districts participating? We also looked at implementation, how is implementation going? What does implementation look like? What are challenges to implementation, and what seems to help schools really get good strong implementation? We also had a focus on student outcomes, looking at how are students and schools doing? We looked at the statewide system and infrastructure for supporting MTSS implementation. That is the training, that is the professional development, and the efforts of the KSDE and the teams in supporting implementation. And then we finally had this longer-term question about sustainability, about how schools and districts are really keeping MTSS going. This chart might be hard to read, hopefully you have it in your packets, but this just gives you a snapshot of the data collection and analysis activities over time. The beginning of 2011 is really a design process, and then in the fall of 2011, we piloted the evaluation system. So piloted the measures, visited some schools and districts, and started collecting the data to test, you know, is this going well? And we made some adjustments over time, and then really started implementing the evaluation in 2012, and had three full years of the evaluation, 2012, 13, and 14. We had, I'd describe it as six major data collection and analysis activities. The first one was analysis of what we call existing or extant data, and that is looking at data that the state collected in terms of who's participating in the formal trainings, where across the state is that happening? We also looked at existing data, student performance on state assessments. We reviewed documents that are used in the training and that are used by schools to help them implement MTSS. We collected some data from schools that's called building level status data, and that is data from universal screening assessments that are conducted with students three times a year that really gauge their progress. And then we did many interviews across the state. We interviewed and did, conducted focus group with core team members, with some TAZN members, with members of the KSDE leadership. We also talked to, I think we talked to every recognized MTSS facilitator across the state. And then we also conducted in-depth and longitudinal case studies, so case studies over time, with six schools and one district. And as a result of that data collection, we spent time in schools and districts over the three years. We interviewed and did focus groups with hundreds and hundreds of teachers and the school leaders and district leaders across the state about MTSS and about how implementation is going, to really learn about that. And then finally, another big piece of our data collection was an annual school survey of school leaders about MTSS, MTSS practices, and really assessment practices, leadership practices, data use practices. That was very instrumental in our evaluation. Kristin is going to talk a little bit more about, some details about the findings, but just to give you a broad overview before we do that, I want to share with you high-level findings, and there are six of them. So the first one is about scope, and we found that the scope and reach of MTSS statewide at this point in time is really well-established, and maybe even is at what we would call a tipping point in scale-up and installation. And as I said, Kristin will provide a bit more details on some of these, and then I will on some of them as well. We also are learning and seeing that schools are really demonstrating the hallmarks of what we'd call strong implementation of the MTSS framework. Third is that implementation at the school level is increasingly consistent. So we see more and more schools implementing the practices of the MTSS framework, and moving from sort of just exploring and learning about MTSS and doing parts of it, to really implementing the whole framework over time. Fourth, we found that MTSS is substantially contributing to improve student outcomes at the local level, as well as resulting in benefits to teachers, improving instruction and improving school functioning in places where it's well-established. Sort of looking at the role of the KSDE, we have found that the KSD has established an effective statewide structure to support and sustain MTSS implementation. And finally, that MTSS implementation, and the framework really isn't static, it's been refined over time, and now is being focused more at the district level and MTSS as a district initiative, rather than at the school level, and to a use of what's termed more of an integrated model, where rather than just implementing in one content area at a time, the areas of reading, math, and behavior are approached in an integrated and simultaneous
So that was a quick overview of the six findings from our four-year study, and I'm going to go in, now we're going to go through each one of them and give you a little bit more information. So the first evaluation question that we needed to address, and the first finding relates to who is participating in MTSS. And what we found is that over time, the school participation in MTSS across the state has gradually increased. So that at this point in time, about half of the schools in the state have participated in some level of formal MTSS training. And as you might know, there is a formal sequence of training that schools who are interested in participating go through. It begins with leadership essentials, it moves into what is referred to as structuring, then goes into implementation training, and all of these phases or training can take a year at least for each, and sometimes longer. So to say at this point that 48% of all schools in the state are, have participated in some level of formal MTSS training is evidence, I think, that MTSS has really caught on in the state of Kansas. Those 48, those schools, 48% of the schools represent only two-thirds of the districts in the state. So it doesn't mean that those districts have embraced MTSS across the board, and that they're doing a district-wide approach to MTSS, but two-thirds of the districts in the state have schools within them that have participated in formal MTSS training and are implementing MTSS. Eighteen, our data show that 18 districts have taken a district-wide approach, and as Natalie mentioned in our study, we looked at one school district who has taken on that a district-wide approach to MTSS, and that was Wichita. We looked at also across the schools that have participated, what percentage of the students in Kansas does that represent? So we don't know about individual kids, but 43% of Kansas public school students are in schools that have participated in structuring or implementation training for MTSS. So that's why our finding is that we think MTSS statewide is very well-established, and maybe at what you might think of as a tipping point in terms of really scaling it up across the state. Finding number two is related to our second evaluation question, which was, what does implementation look like in Kansas schools? So I'd like to go over some of the things that we found across data sources in terms of what schools are doing when they're doing MTSS well. So unsurprisingly, one of the factors is strong leadership, both at the school level and district level. But I think in this, in this variable, we're not just talking about principals, although we always look to the school principal as being the leader of the school or the superintendent and his central office team, but also talking about teacher leadership within schools. And schools that are implementing MTSS effectively have building-based leadership teams that are guiding the implementation, and that gives the teachers that are on those teams a role and responsibility to be leaders among their peers, and I think that's really, we saw that and heard that a lot when we talked to schools, and also that was implied in the survey results. Another important factor, of course, of MTSS implementation is high-quality core curriculum and instruction and assessment practices. That's the key, of course, to high, to good student results, is having that high-quality core, and we saw that in schools that are doing things well. Schools implementing MTSS well also have what we would refer to as an empowering culture, and we don't have the diagram or the graphic that Kansas uses right in front of us to look at the components of MTSS as conceptualized in your state, but empowering culture, if you remember that kind of circular diagram, is one of the key features. And we really saw that in the schools that we visited and in what we heard. Empowering culture referring to things like a shared vision of MTSS, staff support, a common language, so that people are talking and communicating well, and embracing the concept of MTSS as a shared responsibility. Data use and decision-making, of course, is very important. Ongoing professional development is key, and then alignment and integration of school improvement initiatives is extremely important, we think, and we heard that a lot, or asked about that, because we wanted to find out how schools were dealing with continuing their work with MTSS at the same time that other things were coming at them and they needed to deal with, like requirements under the ESEA waiver, like teacher evaluation systems, like possibly new accreditation standards that we've been hearing about, like just higher standards for students, the Kansas college and career-ready standards. So we would ask about, so how are you, how does, how do those things compete with your ability to focus on MTSS? And in schools that are doing MTSS well, we heard over and over again, well, we're able to integrate those things into our framework that we have in our school for MTSS. It's not a competition, it's an integration into our overall framework. And so the schools that were doing it well didn't, were able to see that alignment, in fact, to communicate that alignment, I think, to their teachers and parents and community members in their schools. Implementation facilitators, just to go in a little bit more deeply on some of these, leadership, of course, is one of the top ones. Professional development is extremely important, and under that, we feel that's important, or wanted to emphasize how important that first few years of training is for schools, that schools that try to jump into MTSS without going through formal training are struggling, whereas those who have taken the time, and it's, as I said, it could be a couple of years of that kind of preparation, are really doing a much better job at this point in time. Working with a recognized MTSS facilitator has been important to many schools and is considered a facilitator of their ability to move forward. Sometimes schools, many schools have the luxury, in a way, of having an ongoing support of a building-based MTSS facilitator or coordinator. It's true, often in larger schools, and they find that that's really helpful. Sometimes that person doesn't have a formal title of coordinator, but they're, they're someone, usually a teacher or a department head within the school, who takes it on as their, in their role to help coordinate the process and the framework in their school, and then ongoing professional learning for teachers in using data to make decisions and in the interventions that they're implementing with students. Integration across school improvement initiatives, again, MTSS is not perceived as just one more thing that we have to do, but really are trying to, schools are trying to see the alignment and are making those connections for their staff. And then paying attention to the process, having a formal process for monitoring fidelity is important at multiple levels. And when we're talking about fidelity, we're talking, first of all, about fidelity in the implementation of an intervention. So if teachers are, or if a school has adopted a particular reading intervention for students, it's, it's very important for all the teachers that are implementing that intervention to have the training that they need to implement it correctly, as designed and with fidelity. But also, we're talking about fidelity to the MTSS framework, which has, as we've seen, a number of key features or components. So schools really couldn't be, shouldn't be said to be doing MTSS if they're not doing those critical features. And those are the things that we assessed to a large degree in the survey that we did about how schools were reporting against those critical features. So that was finding two. What's the scope, or finding one was what's the scope, finding two was what does implementation look like? And then finding three is what's happening at schools implementing, in schools implementing MTSS. And what we learned here is that schools are really moving from the beginning stages, where they're exploring implementation, into increasingly advanced levels over time. So a little bit about stages of implementation. We conceptualize the movement that schools and districts demonstrate as they are implementing MTSS more and more effectively, as going through stages. So if you think of developmental stages that children go through, this is kind of developmental stages that a school or an organization might go through as they're implementing something new, and in this case, that new something is MTSS. And our conceptualization of this, I want to acknowledge, is informed to a large degree by the work of Dean Fixon and Karen Blasey, who are two researchers that are now at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and they have done a tremendous amount of work in the area of what does it take to implement something effectively, scale it up over a state as a whole, or even within a district, and then sustain that over time? So in our survey that we used in schools, and we did three administrations of the survey, the survey went to all schools in the state, even if they weren't implementing MTSS, and asked them questions along, that were designed to address the key components of MTSS. But what was interesting about the survey is it was based on the school's report of what they were doing, but it was set up to categorize schools into a stage of implementation based on their responses. So what this chart shows is how schools scored according to stage of implementation over the three-year administration of the survey that we did. And one of the interesting pieces, parts of this, is the initial implementation line. I'm going to see if this thing. I'm gonna see if this thing, it will work here. Well, I'm not in control of it. We noticed a lot of change in the initial implementation stage. So you'll see on the chart that in 2012, thirty-two point eight percent of districts scored in that initial implementation stage, but that went up to sixty-seven point nine percent the following year, and in the last year that we did the survey, went up to seventy-two point four percent. So that shows a lot of growth in that initial implementation stage of implementation. So schools are moving from not being in a stage at all, or not implementing at all, to exploring MTSS, trying to figure out if they want to do it, attending maybe some of the introductory training, exploring with their staffs, do we want to take this on? But then they're moving into installation, which is trying it out that first year or so, but then really moving beyond what could be some frustrating times in the early stages of implementation to scoring in the initial implementation stage. And we have still a relatively small percentage of schools are scoring in full implementation, but we want to, to stress that our criteria in the survey for being considered a school that's in full implementation are really pretty high, rigorous, and you really need to meet all the criteria that we set to be considered a fully implementing, fully implementing This is just showing the criteria, the number of criteria that it takes to get into certain stages. So as I just said, for fully implementation, you have to meet all nine criteria. Now, the next series of slides, and there are, I think, six or seven of these, is intended to show how schools at different stages of implementation are doing or across certain variables that we looked at. And I think you'll see as we go through the slides that the, that the pattern in the graph looks similar for the fully implementing schools. So this variable that we're looking at in this graph is whether or not schools have a building-based MTSS coach or facilitator. We wanted to look at that because we had some, based on what we heard from schools and in the interviews and the focus groups, we had an hypothesis that that was a significant factor for successful implementation. So, so we took the survey data, disaggregated it by how schools scored according to stage. And according to this information, fully implementing schools are more likely than schools in earlier stages of implementation to have a building-based MTSS facilitator or coach. This graph, which is set up the same way so that you can see the contrast between schools that are just exploring to those that are in initial implementation, to those that are in full implementation. This is looking at school, whether or not, or the degree to which schools have reported a shared vision for MTSS within their schools. And I think you can see for this one, that the fully implementing schools are, are much more likely to report that than schools that are at the earlier stages. A similar pattern is seen in this, this graph. This is looking at common language about MTSS. So schools that are at the full implementation stage are much more likely than schools at the earlier stages to report having established among their staff a common language for talking about MTSS, a common vocabulary, which indicates a common understanding of the framework and what it's trying to accomplish. This graph, again, similar pattern in terms of how the colored lines look. In this one, the fully implementing schools are more likely than schools at earlier stages to report that the leadership team that they've established in their school analyzes universal screening data on a regular basis. So in this graph, you can see fully implements, one hundred percent of the fully implementing schools are reporting that the leadership team uses data in that way. In contrast to the schools that are just starting to explore MTSS, where apparently none of their schools have yet established a leadership team that is doing, doing that practice. This graph is showing screening data, using screening data to make decisions about instruction. So schools at the full implementation stage are using data to inform decision-making to a much greater degree than the schools in the earlier stages. Professional development, schools at the full implementation stage are more likely to report having the professional development resources that they need to support MTSS. And I think this is our last, no, not quite. Staff support MTSS, again, the fully implementing schools more likely to report that staff are in support of MTSS. MTSS is institutionalized in our school, meaning it's common practice, it's well-established, it's integrated across initiatives. Again, fully implementing schools reporting it to a much higher degree. And this last one, and this, this relates to our, our issue about integrating with other initiatives, schools that are at the fully implementing stage are reporting that MTSS is integrated with their other school improvement initiatives to a much greater degree than schools in that, those earlier stages. So I think these slides and the pattern that they, that they show helped to reinforce our, some of our hypotheses about what it takes to implement MTSS well and with fidelity. And it also reinforces that as you get going, or as, as schools develop and move through those stages, they become stronger and stronger in terms of implementing these critical So now, I've talked about scope, I've talked about how schools are implementing and facilitators for implementation. Now Natalie's going to talk about some of the challenges that we heard about when we talked with schools and visited and, and on the survey as well.
Thank you. We did, we visited quite a few schools and we talked to many, many people and learned that it was not always easy to get to the point that Kristen just took us through. You know, it's very striking to see the, those blue bars of the fully implementing group and see how different they are from the schools at, at earlier stages. But we also learned that it takes a lot of work to get there, it's not always easy, and there are challenges to, to overcome. And that's what I'm gonna take a few minutes to share with you right now. And I should say, as I'm sure you know, it's, it's not just MTSS that has challenges with implementation. Any kind of systems change initiative, any kind of new initiative, whether it's, you know, trying to institute bedtime for your, a new bedtime for your children to, to, to school systems, it's not always easy. And so, so these are some of the challenges that we identified through the research that we did. And I'll go into detail about each of them, but just an overview. Staff turnover and leadership changes. This implementing in the secondary setting, so in middle and high schools. Integrating different content areas. So schools often started with math, reading, or behavior, and then what to do when they want to do more than one of those areas. And then finally, addressing the needs of students who do, do not make the expected progress. So what do staff do when they've tried everything in their, in their toolbox and their students are not making the progress they expect? So I'll, I'll go into a bit of detail, excuse me, detail about each of these. So staff and, and leadership turnover. We know, you know, in any organization, there's, there's turnover, teachers retire, new teachers come, people go out on leave, there, there is just turnover. But that can pose a challenge to implementation because Chris, as Kristen talked about, the first couple of years involve intensive training around MTSS. And unless a school has procedures for how to integrate new staff, bring them up to speed, it, it can pose a real challenge to having new staff coming on board that don't really understand the process, don't really know the protocols, haven't been trained in the protocols. Related is, there's often a champion at a school, especially when MTSS is starting, before it gets institutionalized, a teacher leader, a principal, a Title I director, readings, but you, somebody who, who really believes this is the right thing for the kids in the school and for that school. And if that person leaves, that can sometimes stall implementation and, and pose a challenge before it's fully institutionalized. Some of the challenges with the secondary setting, so with middle and high schools, have to do with the way their schedules are more structured than in an elementary school. Elementary school schedules are more fluid. If the reading time goes a little bit into math time, you know, you can make, make that up, but middle school, there's a bell, you're, you're changing classrooms. There's a certain number of periods you need to have in a day. At the high school level, you also have credits. So it's a little harder to fit in intervention time, or schools struggle with it, how do we fit in this intervention time that we need for kids who have been identified as needing that? So for example, in a high school, you need to have credits, kids need to be registered into classes. So is intervention time a, a course? Does that become a course for the student? And then if they're in a course for intervention, that takes away maybe something else that they would be doing, so it could be an elective. And some teachers mentioned, some, some folks mentioned, it can be a disincentive to, to kids who might be struggling if the elective is their, sort of their hook into school. There's some concern about how do we fit it into the school schedule to make it work for everyone? Schools that are, are doing this well have, have found ways to do that and often get to share some of their experiences at the annual MTSS symposium, but that is a real challenge that, that schools face at the secondary level. Time is a perennial implementation challenge, whether it's MTSS or other things, and that is, how do I have enough time to do everything I need to do? When you're first learn, when schools are first implementing MTSS, there might be processes and things that, that teachers are doing that, that are new to them, and it's, how do we have enough time to prepare for intervention time? How do I have enough time to look at the data? When do I have time to meet with my colleagues to really plan? That's something that, that gets better with time as they, they learn to, as they practice it and institutionalize, and it really becomes part of the work that they do. But early on, it is, it is a challenge that was identified. I mentioned this already, integrating multiple content areas. As you probably know, schools tended to start with one MTSS content area, either math, reading or behavior. Reading and behavior were the two most common ones. Schools that had success doing that often wanted to add another area. We've been successful in reading, let's add, let's add MTSS intervention time for math. It's been successful for reading, let's, let's address math, for example. Schools sometimes aren't sure how to do that when it wasn't in an integrated way because they're like, do I have another leadership team for a different content area? Do I have two intervention blocks? How do I do this? So integrating multiple content areas is, is something that schools work through and can be a challenge. And then the last one I want to talk about is, is the struggle that schools and teachers might have when they followed all of their established protocols for intervention. So if they're implementing MTSS in reading, they have a series of interventions that are designed to meet student needs based on, on how the student is doing. And generally, students make progress as the, as they go through their interventions. But it happens that sometimes a child doesn't, that a student really, despite the teachers, the schools following protocols, the student isn't making progress. And then schools and teachers can be a bit challenged by what do we do next? That is, that is something that, that we heard. So those were some of the challenges with implementation. I'm gonna turn now to finding four, which is really about the benefits of MTSS. And by benefits, we're talking about benefits to students, we're talking about benefits to teachers, as well as benefits to, to the school. The qualitative data that we had from the many different data sources, from our case study visits, interviews, and the survey, really, we found overwhelmingly support, support the idea that when MTSS is well implemented, it substantially improves student outcomes. And by student outcomes, we mean academic and other outcomes. The data also support that there are positive changes at the local school level, including increased teacher collaboration, increased or improved instructional practices, and, and school functioning. Schools are working more as, as a, an integrated system and, and team. Before I go into some of the qualitative data, I'm gonna share a little bit of the quantitative data that we have. It is very limited, there is not a lot of quantitative data on student outcomes for, for evaluating MTSS. The data that, that we have up on the screen here is what we call the building level status data. This is data that schools collect as part of their universal screening of students. It happens three times a year, usually in the fall, the winter, and the spring, that are used to sort of track student progress, to see, are they at grade level, are they approaching grade level, or are they really needing real, needing supplemental or intensive intervention? A common one you might have heard of AIMS Web, that's a common assessment that is used for reading and, and/or math to, as a universal screener. We collected these data just from schools that were at the full implementation stages identified on the survey that Kristen talked about. For math, and the blue is for reading. These show you the change from fall to spring in the percentage of students scoring at benchmark on the universal screener. So to read it, you would see the, the pointer doesn't work, but the tall bar for, for K is the percentage of students that showed an, that showed an increase in being at benchmark from fall to spring. So you can see most of the, most of the bars, it's all except for one, are above the line, showing an increase in students at benchmark in these schools that are implementing MTSS to a great degree. They're showing improvement over, over time from fall to spring, and that this shows kindergarten through fifth grade. In the kindergarten case, that was almost twenty percent, twenty percentage points, so almost, so you would say about twenty, the increase in students scoring at benchmark in the spring in math for kindergartners was twenty percentage points higher than in the fall. So you're seeing student growth over the year. The exception is third grade math. We do want to caution that for math, that the numbers of schools reporting these data are rather small, so we do take these data with caution. It is the only quantitative data that we have to show with, show, so we wanted to share that with you. Schools collect the data, it's not reported in any central, central way, so, so we do have very limited data to, to share with you. For the survey, however, we did, on the annual survey, we did ask the school leaders each year to, to report on different student outcomes. And these data are from 2014, and they're very consistent to what we found in earlier years, that to some or a great extent, schools are reporting an increase in students scoring at benchmark on the universal screener. Indeed, eighty-nine, almost ninety percent of schools reported that in implementing MTSS, they are seeing an increase in students scoring at benchmark on those universal screeners. So those are the screeners from the graph I just showed you. Seventy point three percent saw, reported increased student scoring proficient on the state assessment. Seventy-seven percent reported a decrease in the number of office discipline referrals for behavior incidents, and about sixty-three percent reported decreases in special education referrals as a result of the work that they're doing. There are other benefits, as I alluded to earlier, of, of reported benefits of MTSS for students, so not just academic outcomes, but positive school changes in, in culture. So as a result of having sort of, especially for schools implementing behavior, there's sort of more consistency across classrooms, in public settings in schools, around expectations for behavior, how those are enforced, that, that contribute to a positive changes in school culture. Through MTSS, students are receiving supports earlier. With the universal screening, students who, who need intervention, who need supplemental assistance are identified earlier and get that help earlier, resulting in students catching up earlier and hopefully closing, closing gaps that we know if you fall behind in third grade and then you fall more behind in fourth grade, that really creates a gap for, for students. The other thing that we, we found is that there's really an increased ownership on the part of students for their learning. So in schools implementing MTSS, and we observed quite a bit of observation, of intervention time, you, you see students really engaging with the process and with their learning and tracking. How am I doing? Am I, am I getting better? Did I, did I achieve the skill that I've been working on over time? And you see it with really little kids, like kindergartners who can tell you, oh, I read this many words today, and last week I only read this many words. So there's sort of this pride and, and accomplishment and pride in sort of their learning and ownership for learning. Turning to teachers now, we also learned about benefits for teachers. And again, I just want to reiterate that this comes through the data collection we did over the, the four years of the evaluation, through the case studies and interviews that were really conducted across the state. And teachers and school leaders, MTSS facilitators, report really an increase in teacher collaboration at schools implementing MTSS. They tend to have common They tend to have common planning time built into their schedule that they didn't have before, and feel that their teaching goes better, that working with the kids go better because they're collaborating with each other as peers and professionals. There's greater awareness among teachers of student functioning. So you might see, you know, if I was a teacher, I would say, well, this is the way I teach, right? I come into the classroom and I'm teaching math the way I teach math. But we heard about teachers being more aware and being able to differentiate by knowing what their students need because they were more aware of the diversity of where kids are at in their classroom in terms of student functioning. And then improved instruction and behavior management, especially for schools doing MTSS in behavior, they were given tools, and there were school-wide systems and processes put in place around expectations for behavior that were more consistent than before, and so they reported improvements there. I think one of the graphs Kristin showed reiterates this qualitative finding around greater ownership and comfort with using data on the part of teachers. Teachers in schools doing MTSS use data. They look at data. They look at data on every kid. They look at data on their class. They look at data on the school, and they become comfortable using that, and they use it in decision-making and in their instruction. And then finally, something that we heard a lot about was shared responsibility for all kids. So not just, not just the kids in my class, but all kids in my grade, all kids in my school. With MTSS, you often find teachers and school staff working with groups of kids who are not necessarily the ones that are in their class every day for intervention time. Groups are based on student skill level, not who's in my classroom. And so teachers really have this shared sense of responsibility for all students and improving learning for all students. I think Kristin's going to talk about our last two findings.
So the finding number five is looking at the degree to which the Kansas Department of Education has supported MTSS. What kind of infrastructure has been put in place in the state? And is it likely to help sustain MTSS over time?
So our finding is that yes, there is an effective statewide infrastructure to support and sustain MTSS. So some of the components of that are what's on the slide. The department has established a strong core team that is leading MTSS implementation across the state. And this is a team that has experts on it from within Kansas, but also experts from around the country. It's heavily invested in ensuring MTSS implementation with fidelity and really is the champion and support across the state for MTSS implementation. The department has also established, as we referred to earlier, a statewide cadre of recognized, and the recognized means that they were trained and met standards for being able to implement MTSS. There's not a licensure requirement in any way that I'm aware of, but they are recognized as officially trained MTSS facilitators. So there's a cadre of these facilitators throughout the state. My understanding is that they're primarily employed by the educational service centers, but schools can call upon these facilitators to come and work with them in their school district or in their school. And we feel that having the availability of people that they can call on like that to do training or even to respond to an email message or a phone call when schools have a question as they're having ongoing implementation is important. So that's a second component of the statewide infrastructure that's been established. A third one is the annual MTSS symposium. I'm sure you've heard about the symposium before, maybe some of you have attended it. Natalie and I have had the option, the privilege of going for several years. But this annual event brings schools together from across the state so that they can hear from national experts, they can get updated on research in the key areas that they're implementing MTS in, and they also have an opportunity to interact with each other and learn from each other, which we heard they find so valuable. So often at the symposium, there are presentations of schools coming to talk about what they are doing and the results that they have achieved. And it's become a really important event for bringing people together across the state. But increasingly, what we learned from looking at the registration lists for the symposium is that the Kansas MTSS symposium is really being recognized nationally as one of the places to go if you want to find out what it takes to implement a multi-tier system of support. Kansas Department of Ed and the core team have developed a really extensive website, which I'm sure you've checked out from time to time, but it's not a website that was developed several years ago and then that's it. It's constantly being updated and refined. Materials are constantly being updated based on what is emerging from current research and experience in terms of implementing what's working well and what needs to be improved. So I think the department and the core team have been very responsive to the feedback that they've received over the years from implementing districts, and that feedback is reflected on the breadth and depth of materials that are on the website. And of course, that website's available to the public in general, not just people in Kansas. And I think it's become more widely recognized nationally as being a place to go for really good information about implementation of this type of initiative. The website also contains a number of professional development resources and materials. These are used in training, used at the symposium, but they're also available on the website. And one of the things we did as part of the study was an analysis of some of these documents to determine the degree to which they were consistent with what we know from research and national standards for professional development or professional learning for adults. And earlier, someone was making a comment about Stephanie Hirsch, having visited here. She's the executive director of Learning Forward, which used to be called the National Staff Development Council. And so we evaluated the doc, some of the documents, not all, but a large sample of the documents against the standards for professional learning that Learning Forward has established, and found that, yes, the Kansas materials were very consistent with what is considered a good way of presenting information to teachers and conducting professional development for adults. Finally, there's, in terms of a component of the statewide infrastructure, there's the statewide dissemination plan for MTSS that's coordinated with the TASN network. So the department has established a network that is across the state that helps them to get information out quickly to teachers from across the state in a very consistent, coordinated way. So all of those things are important to have the support for schools and districts as they continue to implement MTSS and as more and more schools and districts begin to implement it. We asked on our survey the opinion of the respondents about this question, and so this slide shows how they responded. And the percentages show the degree to, or the percentage of respondents that said they agreed or agreed strongly with the statement. So 77% reported that Kansas Department of Ed has established the necessary infrastructure to sustain MTSS. 75, almost 76% reported that the department is effectively disseminating information about MTSS. And whether or not schools are implementing MTSS, they know about it. It's certainly something that is well talked about and understood in terms of what it is across the state. 79%, or 76% are reporting that they have sufficient resources to implement MTSS. 79% reporting that it is well, that MTSS as presented and trained across the state by the department and the core team is well-aligned with other state initiatives. And I know earlier in the meeting, there was a chart that showed the variety, and you couldn't do it on a small piece of paper. You needed quite a large chart to show the various initiatives that are being implemented in the state. And we have always been probing in our conversations with teachers and schools, as well as in the survey, is how does that work for you in schools in terms of the other initiatives that you are being asked to deal with? 79% of the respondents reported that they felt that the way MTSS is being presented is well-integrated with other local state, local and state improvement initiatives. Finally, 61% reported or agreed that they thought there were sufficient MTSS facilitators to support ongoing implementation of MTSS, and that might be an indication that attention needs to be paid to making sure that that support continues to be there. So that was the infrastructure, which we feel is well-established and is likely, if it continues, to be able to sustain MTSS over time. The sixth finding has to do with how MTSS has changed in terms of implementation. And what we found in this final year that we studied the implementation of MTSS in Kansas, so it's there are two main changes that we wanted to talk about. The first one has to do with a shift in focus from one that's focusing on schools to one that's focused more at the district level. And the second one is the use of an integrated approach or an integrated model for MTSS implementation rather than a one-content-area-at-a-time approach, which is how it started in most schools. Let me just say a little bit more about this. I think Kansas, when Kansas started MTSS, it was not a mandate, and it still isn't, but schools, so schools had a choice about the degree to which they wanted to try this out. And it was, it was once, in other words, you didn't have to have your districts embrace this as a district. You, as an individual school within a district, could come to the training, come to the symposium, and begin to implement. What we're, what the department and the core team are feeling at this point is that they want to, as that continues, there are good research and good reasons to think that investment at the district level is more likely to help sustain MTSS and expand it more rapidly over time. So I think there's a decision to change the focus to working more with districts rather than individual schools. And the integrated model is where schools are being asked to tackle reading, math, and behavior at the same time. Natalie talked about some of the challenges that we heard from schools when they said, we started with reading, now we'd like to do math, and we're having trouble integrating the new area with our former focus in a content area. So the integrated model is intended to help schools from the very beginning plan for working in all three of these areas so that they're not establishing one system for reading and then maybe a parallel system for math a year or two later, and then trying to integrate behavior after that. Because really, we need to approach all three areas at once. It's not okay to neglect one if you're focused on another, and I think that's part of the rationale for approaching it in an integrated way. So what are the next steps for MTSS in Kansas? I think after four years of work and study in the state, our message is really to keep up the good work and to stay the course in terms of implementation. We think it's important to continue the key investments that the department has made in supporting districts and investing in district-level capacity building, strengthening the core team, which is so important to the leadership and the direction setting for MTSS in the state, continue to support adherence in schools to the framework, and resist temptation, if you will, of schools that say, well, we're doing MTSS, but we're not really following it, following the framework as designed. We think it's important to keep stressing, these are the key components for this framework, and this is what it takes to implement it with fidelity. One of the things that we think might be good to explore, and this relates to Natalie's data or our difficulty actually in getting a lot of district data using the building-based status forms. We know that that's not a requirement to be reported at the state level, and that there isn't a statewide data system to collect that and to aggregate that data, but we think that looking forward in order to sustain the support for MTSS in the state, it's probably going to be important to be able to say how kids are improving when you look across the state as a whole. And the statewide assessment information may or may not be sensitive enough to capture the short-term incremental progress that schools are telling us that they're receiving. So the building, our thinking is, and you'll decide the degree to which you want to do this or how to do it, but one way of thinking about it is that the building-based status forms, which record the percentage of students in the fall, winter, and spring screenings who score at benchmark, and how that changes over the course of a year, and how it changes over many years, would be really important information to have, and probably would be more sensitive in the short term than statewide assessment results. We think it's important to continue investment in developing state and local support for MTSS, which can be done through dissemination of information, can be done by having good data to show about the effectiveness of this approach. But that kind of support and the momentum that's been created, I think, is important to try to sustain, and no doubt can be sustained because of the infrastructure that's been set up. We feel that Kansas is kind of at a turning point in terms of MTSS implementation as well as a tipping point. The turning point is decision to focus at the district level, so that's a change in approach, and also the change to emphasizing an integrated model. It appears that at this stage of implementation, that that decision makes sense. It might not have made sense at the beginning, when you're trying to just begin to get schools interested. Schools are just exploring whether or not they wanted to engage in this effort. But at this point in time, there are, and this relates to the tipping point issue, there are a lot of schools in the state that are implementing MTSS. According to the participation data that we have, 48% of schools in the state are, have participated at some level in formal MTSS training. In addition, we, as we said, sorry, those 48% of schools represent 2/3 of the districts. So seems to be reiterating what we said about further investments. Statewide data system, we feel, would be helpful. Integrating reporting requirements for districts would help them to integrate these initiatives. So to the degree that you're able to do that for schools, that helps them in terms of implementation. Staying on message is so important, that MTS is the work, so it's not that it's MTSS or teacher evaluation or standards. It's the way we will get to high standards for students is through this kind of a framework. We hope that the state board, or we feel that's important to maintain state board of education support for MTSS because you are leaders for the state. We know that you identified tiered intervention for all schools as a goal, at least that was a goal in your last year's, I think, strategic agenda. We think that's important to emphasize that you're behind MTSS if it's going to be sustained. And we also feel that investment in district ability to coach at the school level is really important to continue because we know that just introducing an initiative and training on it is a good beginning, but not enough. Because implementing this kind of a framework, day by day, year by year in a school, is, as we said, not an easy thing to do, and people will need ongoing support if they want to do it well. So we're just about done. Key takeaways from our study for us are that Kansas is at a tipping point without a state mandate. MTSS really has spread across the state with about half of all schools representing 2/3 of the districts. And 81% of the schools that responded to the survey are implementing MTSS at either an initial level of implementation or higher. So it means they're not just exploring and dabbling in it. They really are invested, and their responses to the survey are confirming that they're implementing, authentically implementing the framework. Second takeaway, we're at a turning point in terms of implementation. Be interesting to see how that goes as the focus has shifted to more of a focus in investment Be interesting to see how that goes as the focus has shifted to more of a focus in investment at the district level. Another takeaway, MTSS takes leadership. This is something that, this is sort of a part of the stay the course message. These are things that are important at the beginning, but they're important to keep doing. So leadership will never not be important. Professional development will be an ongoing need. Emphasis, continued emphasis on a high-quality core curriculum is so important, as well as, of course, assessment instruction and empowering culture and other supports. And finally, a takeaway is lack of statewide ability to really see impact on students through quantitative data is something that should be thought about, is how you might develop that capacity in a way that's acceptable to schools, not a burden on them, but one that you can use to judge the degree to which MTS is having an impact on student performance.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
We have two questions. Can those questions be asked to Scott, or would you like to ask them here? Kathy?
Yeah, because of time. I mean, I can just chat with them real quick.
Okay.
Because we have to get back.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I want to thank the board members for their patience and good citizens. Janet, how long do you need for your meeting?
We'll hurry. We'll get through as quickly as we can.
Okay, well, let's be back here at 1:45.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.